Okay. You ready? Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Federway City Council for October 1st of 2024. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Recording in progress.
All right, before we get started, Councilmember Tran is on his way. He is not far away, but he'll, he's excused until he arrives here. Okay, and now, we are, this is a continuation of the study session that we had last week, and we've got Brian Davis, our city administrator. He'll talk about economic development, emergency management, finance, human resources, IT, law, and the mayor's office. So, with that, Brian?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. There we go. Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council. We are continuing the discussion from last meeting about the budget, and so we'll continue from where we left off. We just had finished community development, so we'll be on to economic development next. Economic development does, it's multifaceted, but three of its main functions are business retention, business investment attraction, and tourism and visitor experience. Other things that economic development does for us is help with our legislative agendas, both federal and state. Tanya is a huge help with that. As those who went on the Sister Cities trips saw, that economic played an important role in coordinating all of that, that trip, and the relations that we have with our friends within Sister Cities. They have helped us with grant writing for the city and helped us secure many grants that we otherwise would not have gotten had they not implemented this, this additional grant writing service that we have with the city. And then they manage the city lodging tax program. I'm not going to go through these in detail, but the one thing that I really like about this slide is that in economic development, sometimes the success is, is hard to measure. You know, economic development talks about, you know, jobs or, or some other thing that's easy for us to think about, but economic development is much more than that. It's building on, it's using two different tools to build a foundation, to then build the next level, and it's multifaceted. And what I love that our economic development team has done here with Tanya as our director is that they're, they're putting measurables to much of the work that they do. And so we're able to report to you, the city council, and to the people of the city and of the region that indicates the success that we are having as an economic development team. Some of the other wins from the business resiliency side is if you look at this table there, if you look at the local, the column that says local, these are things that we have done locally to help our businesses from an economic development standpoint. The MST program, this helps with the security of our businesses. It puts a, a mobile trailer on site with cameras that helps deter much of the criminal activity that otherwise happens without those there. And we've expanded that thanks to the police department and through efforts of the economic development department. Our graffiti program is, you know, the mayor brags about our graffiti program all the time, as he should. We are, we, we simply don't let it last. We don't tolerate graffiti in the city, and within 24 hours, it's either painted over or we are, have made contact with the property owner to get it down as soon as possible. But we are, we are swift to take action on graffiti. We've also done efforts to deter graffiti through our mural program. We have, the council has taken action to update the shopping cart ordinance, which has reduced the use of stolen shopping carts in the city. The, the police SOU unit within the police department is specifically designated to work with incidents of crime related to, that, that has an effect on our businesses. And then our Safe Cities Program, where we get together with businesses and talk about ways to improve the environment for our businesses to thrive. The, as far as attraction goes, the, if you, you've, you've seen this before, it's on the left, that's a, an inside cover of a magazine that goes on many of our flights out of, out of C-TAC, and that's been viewed by hundreds of thousands of, millions of people. And it's, it's putting Federway on the map. That's one thing that our economic development team is trying to do, is to, is to get Federway, Federway's on the map. We're trying to create a more distinctive look for our city on the map and really promote the resources and assets that we have for businesses to thrive here. And you all know, on this right portion of the, of the slide, the businesses that we have attracted to the city within the, the current biennium. These are really great wins for the city, great businesses. I've had the pleasure of working with all of them. It's wonderful to have them in the city now with us to help our local economy. One thing I'll, this, as far as the tourism goes, for the, the tourism side of economic development, you see the mayor here at the Pouring Arts Center when we were, you know, promoting the Huskies. And then also, many of you know this poster, or not this poster, but this, this advertisement at C-TAC in the baggage claim area. This is seen by millions of people. This, this, again, this is showing Federway, the, the natural beauties and the amenities that we have in the city to all those passing through the airport. Another opportunity for, for tourism and, and promotion of the city was through the NHRA Nationals that we got involved with and, and used it as an opportunity to really promote Federway. The mayor was there, he was interviewed by Fox. Millions of viewers saw that. It was a, again, it's, it, we have a measurable return on, on our involvement with that. The, the signage value, we estimate to be north of 100,000, so it was a huge win. Again, getting the Federway name out there and recognized in a positive way is what, one of the things that we're trying to do. As with all of the departments that you've heard, we, we are short-staffed in economic, economic development, and that creates a challenge. Despite this, we are continuing to get Federway on the map and improve the reput-, or to enhance the reputation that we have for the business community. We want to get more BIPOC businesses involved in the community and up and running and maintained in the city. To retain, expand businesses related to e-commerce, and just to continue our ongoing efforts to work with businesses on creating a climate that is positive for them. These are, this is a list of the, some of the funded goals. Again, we're, we're trying to, again, we're trying to get messages out there that are positive. And one thing that I would show on this slide is the second bullseye there, where it talks about business sales and growth. The bullet, bullet pointer that says 100 businesses, or excuse me, 100 business in-person outreach. That means that we have had, we've talked face-to-face in our outreach efforts to more than 100 businesses. And I know that, that councilmember Honda, and I think councilmember Safa Dawson as well, were, were in on the interviews when we were hiring our economic development director. And one thing that I remember about Tanya, when she was one of the candidates, is that she, before she came into the interviews, she had gone out and already talked to several businesses within the city before her job interview to get a sense for what the business community was like. And she has continued that, that love and that interest for the city and for the businesses in the city. We're very fortunate to have someone like that to help lead the, the economic development because that, that indicates that we care about businesses. We're not just, not just in an office analyzing numbers. We're out there connecting with businesses and helping them with their needs. Some of the next dollar priorities, again, to continue revitalizing the brand and reputation of the city, and then leverage our, our healthcare base. That's one of our strongest bases that we have in the city, and to continue the, the tourism function of economic development. We have some exciting opportunities for that and some of that I've already mentioned. Okay, and with that, I or Tanya are happy to answer your questions.
Okay, council, we're going.
Yeah, I have a question. As I, I look through this in the presentation, I don't see anything about grant writers. Are we continuing that program? Are we going to fund that a different way, or what's happening?
So, that is something that we, it's not in the budget, but we will, something that we will make happen. And in the discussions with council, that's something that staff is going to bring up. But it is, it is something that we, although it's not in the first cut that you have before you, it is something that we want to continue. We have, effectively, we've got one that's, we just need to find, finish the paperwork on it, but we've got something, I believe it's...
How much was the HUD grant? Was it 800, the HUD grant?
Yeah, so we've got over $1 million secured in grants through, just in, within the last year, so we, we do want it to continue, continue. The, the, what I will say about the grant, this particular, we have grant writing all over the city that has happened for years, so this is additive to economic development and a few other departments. Much of the funding that we get from that grant writer is to, is to help, is to take us to the next level. So it's nothing to like supplement the current budget that we're dealing with. So just to, just caution, if anyone's thinking that those, some of these grants will help with that. They could, but the ones that we have so far are, are nothing to help offset some of our budget needs that we have, but it's to help us perform even at a higher level than we are now.
And if I could clarify, I don't, I don't see it as a supplement to what we're already doing. I, I, what I've seen in all the presentations, whatever, that money we put aside is brought in plus business, and I don't want to go backwards and see if we can grow on that.
We agree. Thank you. Councilmember Honda, councilmember McDaniel, then councilmember Walsh. Actually, first, go ahead, Tanya.
I mean, just by the next question will be for her.
Oh, okay, great. All right, great. Councilmember Honda?
Can you let Paul go first, so I can get my...
Sure.
Thank you. I'm going to start off with the MST's. I noticed I didn't see any over in the parking lot. Do we have all eight, or how many do we have actually active in, in the community right now?
So, I've been coordinating with PD on that. Just had a meeting yesterday morning with Lieutenant Peterson. We actually are kind of starting a kickoff meeting to officially, now that we have a little bit of data, figure out how to move forward on that. So it'll be IT, economic development, and PD that we're coordinating to kind of get it a little bit more officialized, who does what. Currently, I don't know if Lieutenant Peterson, can't see, is, no, I believe it's six of the eight are currently functioning. There's two that are gasoline-powered and six that are solar-powered. And so, don't quote me on this, but if I remember correctly, because I just looked at the spreadsheet briefly yesterday morning, I think it's the two gas-powered ones that are not currently, or that are being worked on. But that's all things, next week, we have our, our first kind of kickoff meeting scheduled, so we can certainly keep council a little bit more abreast and informed of, of how that is going and, and how they're getting deployed.
Yeah, I have quite a few companies who have been asking, and I don't know where to send them, so I'll, is there going to be, in the long term, is there going to be like a link on the website that they can easily, or do they have to go through one of our employees every time to request it? Is that what you guys are going to work on?
That's something that we will be discussing. You know, we have, as, as we've said, over 4,000 businesses and we have eight MST's. We also have special events, you know, at certain locations and things like that. And so, it's kind of, we're going to have to figure that out, like how to do that. Right now, it's just, as you mentioned, you know, calling PD or calling myself, and we, you know, monitor where kind of the hotspots are and, and then monitor who's had it and, you know, try to be as equitable as possible, but it's, it's an evolving process and it just, you know, eight versus 4,000, we got to figure it out.
Gotcha.
In the meanwhile, just direct them to our office, my office, the mayor's office, and we'll, we'll send them out.
Awesome, I'll do that then. The next one's actually on employment. We've met in the past a couple times, and one of the things that I'm really big on is small business and outreach, and we've had that conversation. Looking at, I did not see a request for an employee on here, but I do know we've talked in the past and there's other conversations about business retention employee and tourism employees and other ones. What would the starting rate, range be or salary be for someone like that if we were to, to bring them on to be able to do that retention maybe slash tourism?
Councilmember, I want to let you know, let me if I could.
Yeah.
She did advocate internally for three employees, but as part of my proposed budget, I didn't put them out there. So I want to let everybody know that, that she actually did strongly and forcefully advocate for those, but...
She might not be the only one.
What's that?
She might not be the only one.
Okay, very good. And, and very, in fact, but I wanted, I wanted to let, let everybody know that. But with that, go ahead.
Okay. I'm looking for a price point.
I have it, I, I made a, a kind of suggestion in the memo to the mayor, and essentially, I don't remember exactly off the top of my head, but the range for the strategist position, which would be more on the kind of tourism side and analytics and, you know, business data, things like that. Again, don't exactly quote me, but I think it was like 80-ish to like 110. And then the other one was a, a program manager, which would be more on the business retention expansion, and I think that was about 90-ish to 115 or 20.
Ballpox.
But again, I would, I would defer to our... No, that was with me, yeah. I, I would also defer, of course, to our HR director because that was just kind of a rough, like, hey, where do we even start the discussion? So I would defer to HR on, you know, if that became an issue.
Let's do this, though. The memo that you sent me about the, the economic development positions, would you send to the entire council?
Sure.
So they have the benefit of that information and your recommendation?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Next question, as you know, I like money, I like looking at the numbers and stuff like that. Sales tax and business license are the two things I usually look at for the economic development and where we're standing. Is there anything else you, that you think being in the position is a strong indicator that we need to probably take a look at more consistently? Because I mean, I can look at sales tax, I can look business license for the numbers, but is there anything else that you think would be a, a nice key indicator, key performance indicator?
May I ask for clarification? What is the performance indication that you are looking for?
Success and, you know, well, yeah, success in the economic development of the city. So it's something that I can look at as tangible, that can you say, hey, we did a program, what were the, you know, what were the results of that program that are actually tangible? I mean, easy one is sales tax and the business license numbers themselves, but I was just wondering if there's anything else that you would recommend, or maybe you've been digging into the data and have another idea on?
So maybe two-part answer. The first, I would be grateful if we could perhaps take that offline and discuss it because with metrics, it, it's kind of, you got to know what the, the answer is that you're looking for before you can provide a metric. So I'd be happy to sit and, and figure some of those out because I have a whole bunch of different thoughts on that. But if, I, I pulled this slide up because to your point on metrics, the, the city hasn't ever measured these types of things before, and I've been here, you know, now for two years. And so we do have data on, you know, things like this. For example, with our investor developer pipeline, we have 27 relationships, you know, in 18 months that were built. So now we have a baseline in the next biennium that we can measure that by. Just as an example, you know, maybe to give a little bit more context, with the business support initiatives, what we can measure specifically on those, for example, if we use this, you know, to kind of explain, on the fundraising workshops, A, we can figure out, you know, how many people signed up and took the course, and then we can also survey them, you know, at six months and a year to see kind of what their metrics are, and, you know, et cetera, et cetera, right? Childcare entrepreneurial support there, we can follow the entrepreneurs that we've supported and make sure that they're still in business one, two, you know, five years after. Does that kind of give you a little bit more of a flavor?
It, it does, and it's going to be one of those things, like I said, I, I look at sales and the business license because they're the easy indicators, but I know there's more granular ones that can be looked at to say that those will slowly evolve into that one. But the big one, obviously, is sales tax numbers and...
Super excited to get into, you know, into it with you on that because the strategist position, that is one of the functions. The strategist would start to also provide a lot of support for the finance department in analyzing a lot of the data that we're just kind of consuming, but we're not actually connecting dots and, you know, trying to kind of figure...
Just raw data.
Yeah. So that, that, just to give an example, would be something I would be super excited about as well.
Last two questions, the ARPA contracts. We've got a lot of programs, like what my colleague said, we don't see the funding in it. Is there any big ARPA programs that you think are like, yes, those are definitely ones that we've seen some, some positive results on that we will be seeing in the future again? Because like I said, I don't see any money in the budget for some of those programs to continue. And I did like the, the group from Tacoma who came in and did some stuff with us. They had a good vibe and I liked them, but I'm just curious, is there any, any particular groups or contracts you could say like, yes, that's one of the strongly? Not all of them, just like one or two?
Again, great question. Success on, on the different programs, and by the way, the business support and initiatives, those mostly are ARPA programs, just for context. Again, if, you know, if you're looking at a workshop, right, the success on that would be the businesses, you know, are they securing grants and funding in a year or two years after the course? And so that's, you know, that would be a potential indicator, right, if you were wanting to know that. But then if you're looking on a higher kind of quantity level, I would, we actually are continuing our business outreach and survey program through the Port of Seattle Economic Development Grant, and that, we are coming into Federak and, and actually, you've seen some of the numbers already. We survey between 500 and 700 businesses a year, and it's the same four questions that we ask every year. That is an extremely successful program because what we've been able to do over the last two years is get a baseline of, hey, this is where the businesses are at. So, you know, how many years have you been in business? What are the things that, and programs that the city and others provide that are helping you? What are the ones you want to see more of? Those are the questions on the survey, and then what keeps you up at night as a business owner. That's been an incredibly valuable question to ask because that's where we've gotten all of these business programs. They literally, we, we take a lot of pride at, at the city in not just surveying businesses, but actually understanding what they want by asking those questions and then directly providing the program. So for example, on the business support and initiatives, those are all programs that the businesses directly said that they would, you know, like a program to solve their issues they have.
Okay. I might come back to that question again in a future note. My last one is actually on the budget itself on page 62. I noticed, you were the first one talking today, so we're going to hit you guys first. I noticed there's quite a big of, quite a percentage, percentage base increase was quite large for benefits, and it wasn't just your department, I mean, HR and a few other ones I noticed. We're looking at 55, 35%. It's probably not a question you might be able to answer, might go over here, but I'm just curious to know why, when everything else was kind of staying the same, that the benefit packages amount just really skyrocketed? Would I...
My only guess would be that we have a new employee, so it was an administrative assistant two position. The, there was an administrative assistant one position that wasn't filled, and the whole department was vacant for a bit. So it could just be the fact that we have a higher level administrative assistant and then, of course, the corresponding benefits. That would be my estimation.
Does anybody else have any feedback on that one?
Would, would you be okay if we got back to you on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'll take that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. Under business and sales tax growth, you say that one of your objectives is to sustain and grow sales tax revenues, which I think is amazing, since that's one of our concerns here in the city. How, I, I, and I see your strategies, but are these strategies, strategies that you're working with, or is a consultant doing these things?
Which strategies would you be referring to?
Conduct regular business visits and surveys to understand the needs and challenges.
Oh, so that specific one is, as I was mentioning before, with the, the business outreach that we do every year, it is a company called Direct Interactions, and they have a call center that does outreach. So it, it unfortunately wouldn't be possible for us to do that much outreach. They outreach to between 500 and 700 businesses a year, and they talk to them on the phone, confirm their contact information is correct because unfortunately, the licensing information isn't always correct. Then they also ask them the four survey questions, and then also offer them resources. We have a seven-page resource guide for businesses that includes resource names, resource websites, and what type of resource it is for them. So they'll ask if they want that sent to them, and that's where we get, you know, the, this year we had almost 400 surveys that were filled out and returned, which is an incredible return rate, and...
So how would you measure that? How would you measure sustaining and growing the sales tax revenues?
So, the easiest way is to just look year-on-year, and this, for example, would be something that the strategist would be working on. Looking at the sales tax, where's the sales tax coming from? You know, is it trending up or down? Who are the, you know, top sales tax bringers in the city? Having conversations directly with them, you know, kind of setting a baseline and looking at the trends to see and be able to, you know, somehow predict, hey, is there a correlation between, for example, you know, a big event nationally or regionally with sales tax going up or down, so that we can preempt it and understand where we can fill in gaps if there is going to be some kind of a...
And that would be you actually going out to the businesses?
A combination. It would be a combination of desk research, so doing a lot of analysis on what is happening with sales tax historically and where do we see it going, and talking to the businesses because we figured out, you know, from that analysis, who those businesses are that we should go talk to.
Okay. Under attracting investment and development, you have streamlined permitting process to encourage new developments and reduce the average permitting time with, within the bi- biennium. How can your department do that?
So we already have started working, economic development and planning have started a, for lack of better terms, I, I guess, an informal committee. And it's two people from community development, from planning, and then myself. And so we essentially meet and discuss kind of, I mean, I'm going to be very high level, right? But what is, as I'm sure everyone's heard me say, what is the user experience that is desired, and how do we get to that user experience? So it's a, it's, it's in its infancy, if you will, but that's kind of where we've started is how do we want the experience to look? We have a lot of data from all of our bigger customers, if you will, so they've provided a lot of feedback to us on where exactly the process is, you know, could be improved. So point being is that it's, it's not enough to just say the permitting process is broken. What we are trying to do is break it down into its, you know, component parts and then understand and identify what does the experience look like so that we can be very mindful of, you know, being able to address issues.
You also have under that bullet, facilitate the redevelopment of underutilized properties. Could we get a list of those as a council?
It's, that is, that's something that we're working on continuously, and so essentially, if you look at the downtown, for example, the, or the, you know, we're trying to revitalize that entire downtown area. So that currently would be, that whole downtown area, you know, is, there are some properties on there, for example, that would be potentially considered underutilized, but, you know, I want to make it also very clear, we don't own the properties, and so this is just having conversations with owners of properties, and, you know, if they don't have an appetite to do anything, then, you know, there's no conversation that could be had. But if there is an appetite, then we certainly can let council know.
Okay. Track and report on the business retention rate, aiming for 75% retention rate. Can you tell us now what the current retention rate for businesses are in the city?
I don't have an exact number, but the businesses that were renewed last year were a little over 3,000. I just don't know what percentages are off the top of my head right now.
Provide financial incentives or resources to at least 20 local businesses annually? What, could you explain what that is?
You mean what it is that we do?
What, what your goal, what your goal is? And what, how do you pick the 20 local businesses? What incentive, financial incentives do you give them?
So essentially, to make it super simple, it's connecting businesses with resources. So businesses reach out to economic development on a regular basis, and so it's either them reaching out to us and saying, we need support on, you know, financial incentives, whatever those might be, depending on their situation, and then us connecting them with those resources. That is 99% of the time what it is. The city doesn't per se have a funding bucket, if you will, to, you know, provide to businesses, but what we really strive to do is, there are a lot of funding resources that are out there, and having, you know, had businesses in other countries where I've had to figure out funding resources, I, I understand that it's, it's just all the businesses really want is a one-stop shop. Like, who can I go to and who's my concierge that can just tell me, like, here's the 17 different places that I could get funding? And that's really what we strive to do is, if we don't have the money, it's not an issue, it's just getting them connected to the money.
Under, on the mayor's office economic, economic development hotel motel lodging tax fund, there's a, under services and charges, 152.5% increase. Is that an increase in the lodging tax actually coming in?
I would have to look at that, but I, I believe that that is what it is. I'm looking at Steve. I don't have that in front of me, but I'm pretty sure that's what it is. After COVID, you know, the way that the lodging tax is collected is on room rates, and so the room rates, you know, when they increase, then the lodging tax correlates with an increase as well.
Okay, and my last question is, I don't see... And my last question is, I don't see anything in your plan, and I could have missed it, in working with the Chamber of Commerce?
So, we are open to working with all organizations that work in the city. And I'm very emphatic about the fact that we have over 4,000 businesses. The chamber has been offered several times in the past to collaborate on any or all of the programs. And so, we are open to collaborating whenever.
Actually, the council was in receipt of a memorandum of at least two dozen, where it was like a couple pages of offers that we made to the chamber to collaborate, coordinate, work on things, and each one of those was declined by the chamber.
Correct.
Would you like to send that again, please, to the council?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. In fact, I made it Ms. Carter's, Tanya's, number-one priority to work with the chamber. And over the course of all those time, not one initiative was accepted by the chamber. Councilor Walsh?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Going back to Councilmember Dovi's question about the funding for the grant program. And Brian said that it's not in the current plan, but we plan to do it. My question is, is why isn't it in the current? Why isn't it in?
Which, why is what?
The grant program, the organization that we've contracted with to research grants.
Yeah, I can answer it. So, we were, we had, you can put it on me, we had deadlines to get you a balanced budget on time, and we just didn't get the information on time. So, we did get the information about the grant writer afterwards. And again, that's on me. So, the fact that it's not in there doesn't mean that we don't want it, and we will make it happen.
Okay, all right. And then, second question. With a lot of discussion with sales tax, and sales tax is a metric, and also attracting more businesses, is there, and this may be a question more for Steve, I don't know, but is there a way to measure, you know, right now, we get reports on sales tax from different geographical areas in the city. But is there a way to get a report on sales tax from new businesses? What sales tax has been collected by, from businesses that have been in business within the last year?
So, the short answer is, it would be possible, but we would have to investigate how. And what I mean by that is, there are certain rules by the Department of Revenue about, for example, if there's a, what do you call it, like a industry where there's three or less businesses, then you can't report on sales tax.
I know we can't identify particular businesses.
Yeah, but incremental changes.
But just that is the class, new businesses is the class.
Yeah. I mean, again, with those restrictions in mind, we could certainly figure something out with that. And again, that would be what the strategist would do, is support finance with a lot of the analysis and digging deeper into the numbers, if that position would be available.
Okay. All right. Is that something currently that the finance could do?
It's pretty detailed. I mean, I don't want to speak for finance, but it's a lot of, I've dug into it a little bit myself. And it takes a while, and you also, I mean, you've got to get used to the numbers, you've got to get used to where it's coming from, and you've got to kind of figure out a strategy for how you're going to approach it. So, it does take a lot of effort to do that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Councilor Hahn.
Yeah, two follow-up questions. One, on this, one that's up here where it says funded business sales tax growth. I don't think in our environment, you're going to be able to just, you're going to see any big sales growth, I mean, sales tax growth. If you bring in, you know, we've got the guys across the street coming in, Pape and all that, you'll see some growth there as they sell things. But I don't think that's a good way to measure. The only way I think you can measure it is by how many new businesses open, not sales growth. The ocean's too big to see it change. So, I think that's maybe titled wrong. And I guess the other thing is, we've talked, Councilmember Walsh, myself, and a few others, we've talked about this grant writer. I want to, where's it going to be in the budget? Is it going to be in economic development? Are we going to, where's it going to fall?
It will be.
And we'll see that before we vote on it, X amount, and it's going to change?
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So, Tanya, you're going to get them, you're going to get the council the memos, the memo that you sent me about the employees and the pitch you made, want to make sure there's transparency there. You're going to get them the memorandum that you previously sent to them regarding outreach to the chamber and efforts to try to get the chamber involved. You were going to follow up on that increase of 152% or the question that Councilmember Honda had. And what was that again?
Hotel motel lodging tax.
Oh, hotel motel lodging tax. And that was an increase of what?
152.5%.
152.5%.
Could you remind me what page that was on?
It's on page 62.
Page 62.
62, it's the budget, so Hotel Motel Lodging Tax Fund.
Sure.
And it was an increase in salary?
Services and charges.
Services and charges.
Sure.
Okay. And then, were you going to follow up on anything else? I just want to make sure.
No, that was all that I had remembered that I should follow up on.
Counsel, did you recall?
I mean, I had to think of a question of a bunch of them. The benefits, but I'll ask, and then someone will figure it out. It's on more than one department, so that's my curiosity.
Mayor?
Yes.
Since we've been talking, I've gone back, and I think I can answer Councilmember McDaniel's questions about the salary and benefits for economic development.
Okay.
A lot of this is going to be attributed to staff change. So, you're seeing actual numbers versus budgeted numbers. So, in 2022, Tim Johnson left the city in April of 2022, and that position remained vacant until Tanya was hired in that December. We also had the admin and economic development leave during that time, and there was a vacancy. So, the increase you see from '22 to '23 is addition of staff and filling vacancies. And then, Tanya also went through a process, I believe, to reclassify Julie through FedRAC and get approved for that part-time two admin. So, that's the additional increase you see there. And then, the proposed change from '24 to '25 is going to be inclusive of COLA for both Tanya and her admin, as well as step increases, as they are not yet maxed out in their salary ranges.
So, would the $30,000 change in benefits, would that be the step, or is that strictly healthcare and stuff like that?
They're all based on wages. So, when the step increases, the benefits will also increase. And finance is pretty steady in using that 38% of salary to estimate cost of benefits.
This is weird, the 7% increase in salary has a 55% increase in benefits. The numbers are just big. But if that's what you're saying, I'll dig in, but thank you.
Sure.
Okay. So, was that your, does that relate to the question you had about 152%? Or is that separate?
Two different budgets.
And you were on page 61?
62.
62, okay.
I'm here.
Got it. Okay.
May I just make one comment to Councilmember Honda? Again, I will research it. But the other thing with lodging tax increase is that we came out of COVID, which, of course, as everyone knows, the hotel and hospitality industry was the heaviest hit. So, that increase is also probably contributed to the fact that there was significant increase in tourism again. But we'll certainly confirm that hypothesis.
Very good. Okay. Councilor Walsh?
Yeah, back to this increase, 55.8% increase in benefits. And you're saying it's tied to more staffing and stuff. But it's only a 7.7% increase in salaries and wages. And it seems like that the increase in salaries and wages and the increase in benefits would be roughly tied to each other, rather than dramatically different.
Could that be the addition of Julie's position?
Julie's position was originally slated to be admin one, and then we reclassified it to admin two. So, that also correlates to a higher salary. So, that may also, I think, as Director Arndt was mentioning, there was a reclassification, which also could correlate to the.
But still, wages and benefits should be in the same ballpark.
But I don't think Tim ever had, I mean, Tim never had a person like Julie.
I think the complication with benefits is that we're estimating cost of benefits at 38% of wages. The actual may be much lower. So, if we're comparing actual numbers to projected numbers, it's dependent upon whether or not I'm insuring myself, or if I'm insuring my spouse and three children, if I'm electing different benefits. It's really employee by employee, and we're using a flat number to estimate. So, that could be the difference between actual and projected, making it look like it's an inflationary increase. That's not quite accurate. But to cost individual, employee by employee, by bargaining unit, by benefit election, is quite an arduous task. So, we've supported using the 38%.
And when we're budgeting for an unknown opening, we tend to budget conservatively. And then, once the employee's in the position, then we have a trajectory of what they have elected, and we can budget lower next year if we know that that's accurate. I can also answer your 152% question.
Oh, good. Go ahead.
In 2024, we budgeted tourism enhancement grants at 65,000. In the current budget, we budgeted 170,000. That was, at the time, we were budgeting to spend all of the revenue that wasn't spent to give to the Performing Arts Center. So, it's an increase in tourism enhancement grants, is what the big increase was, from 65 to fully utilizing all the revenue.
Thank you.
Okay, good. So, it's just the two emails. All right. All right, thank you, counsel. All right, now, Brian, that's it for economic development. Thank you. Of course, she's, if you think of another question, we're still in the same session, so we could switch back over. All right, Brian, now we're on to emergency management. Kevin, Colonel Pelley is here to help us out if need be and answer any questions. But Brian?
Okay, thank you. All right, so here's what we're going to be talking about for emergency management, just for orientation. So, Kevin is our one and only employee. We do have a volunteer, but he's our one and only employee of emergency management. Helps with disaster mitigation, preparedness, response, recovery from emergencies. He's also the chair of the Greater Federal Way Community Emergency Management Program, which is a partnership that we have with South King Fire, Lake Haven, and Virginia Mason, and is also director of the Emergency Operations Center when that gets activated. And we do, on occasion, bring in practice drills and other exercises to help the EOC be smooth and operating should something more serious occur. Here is the grants that we get for this branch of services that we provide. We get about 50,000 a year. That's based on our population. We get about 50 cents a person. And these next two slides are similar, so I'm going to skip to the next one that talks about what the grant and other general fund, funding that we do for emergency management. I mentioned the EOC. Much of what we do is centered on that. That's the heartbeat of, in the case of an incident, that's where we coordinate everything. The funding that we did from the grant helps to upgrade that facility. It's something that needs to be ready to go on a moment's notice with no warning. And so, we're always looking to make sure that it is where it needs to be as far as equipment, materials, procedures, personnel, training, and the like. We also funded to make sure that our communications are operational in the event of an emergency. The, we need to be, in a disaster, sometimes communication channels are down, or ones at least that we're used to during regular times are down. And so, we have to resort to other forms of communication, and we want to make sure that those are redundant. We have radio and antenna equipment that we need to be upgraded, make sure is up and running. We've had great partnership with Amateur Radio Club and their passion for the hobby. As a hand myself, I'm interested in that as well. So, that's always fun to see them come to the city to talk about communication through amateur radio and help with semi-annual training at the EOC. We also are talking about incident command vehicles and mobile emergency communication vehicles, just in case we need to, if, for whatever reason, the EOC isn't working, or if the EOC is working, and we need to get either an onsite location secured, then the vehicle helps us get there with all the equipment that is needed to make sure that we're still in communication and has the, what we need to coordinate an emergency response. Disaster response equipment to get the city prepared, to make sure that we're not surprised and unprepared for an emergency. We have food storage and water storage ready to go that has a long shelf life, cots, and then drones to help with assessing disaster situations that helps with the information flow during an incident. Challenges, this is a theme that you'll hear throughout the last couple of meetings and today. Kevin, Colonel Pelley is our one and only person for emergency management. He does an excellent job. We are so fortunate to have Kevin as our emergency manager. He does an excellent job. I mentioned Tanya's interview. Kevin's was the same way. I remember his interview, and I was like, there's no question here who we need to bring on board, and he's been excellent, and we're fortunate to have him. And funding is another challenge. We rely on grant funding and then a portion of other funds. And so, it's always a challenge to make sure that we have enough to keep emergency management going. With that, happy to, for any questions.
Councilor Hahn.
Thank you. So, talking about staff, as a city our size, how many folks should we have in your department?
If we were fully staffed, we probably would have at least two more, at least part-time employees, if not full-time employees, two more.
Is it possible to get at least a part-time employee this year?
I don't think it's on this budget, Councilmember.
I was just looking at the mayor. I mean, looking at what's happening in North Carolina, in the South, that's devastating, and all we need is for the mountain to blow, you know? And who knows what would happen to us? And a lot of those folks are on their own. We could be on our own, too.
No, absolutely. I would love to have, right now, I have one part-time employee, Sharon Green. She is.
She's amazing.
She is. She is. And she is the Energizer Bunny. She cleans her church every week. She's also a nurse's assistant, certified nurse's assistant, and has several clients there. And she's also with the Volunteer Fire Police Explorer Volunteers in Bonnie Lake. So, she does a tremendous job in everything. But if something happened to her, or if she chose not to come in, she is a volunteer. We're blessed to have her and to have an outreach coordinator. In the next budget, you'll see that in two years to request. But under this budget, I did not push against the budget to have an employee this time.
My next question is, so it used, before COVID, when there were exercises for your department, and fire came, and school came, the hospital came, the council was also invited. Do you still hold those, and can council eventually start coming to those? Because during an emergency, we're going to have to be involved in some shape. And if we have no information, and we don't know what's going on, we're not going to be very helpful.
Sure. And I've taken a crawl, walk, run to this, that since 2020 with COVID and with RACE illness, the system kind of went, they did a good job of keeping it running. But starting from scratch, this past year, we started with an EOC exercise. We did a tabletop again this year. And in the coming year, actually, on October 24th, is our Greater Federal Way Community Emergency Management Program Oversight Committee, where the superintendent, the fire commissioners, the mayor are going to meet semi-annually, and I'm going to pitch my plan for the next year. In April, Federal Way School District has agreed to host a tabletop for an active shooter. That could have council participation in that. And then, in October, to have the Great Shakeout, to expand upon what we've done over last year and what we're going to do this year. This year is a communications exercise. Last year was, can we, as a city, do a drop cover, hold on, evacuate, city hall, and come back to work? My proposal is that next October for 2025, we have a major exercise where what does the city do in case of the 9.0, like the disaster they had with the hurricane? That is my proposal, Councilmember, that in April, we focus on the school district. And next October, so 12 months from now, then we have a major exercise in which I'd love to have council participation.
So, you mentioned, this October, you're going to have the superintendent, mayor, and fire commissioners?
That is the greater, last year at this time, we passed the resolution for the inter-local agreement to reestablish what was already in place, but we didn't have, the document expired in 2016, for the Greater Federal Way Community Emergency Management Program. That's the city, the fire department, Lake Haven, and the school district. That's the city, the fire department, Lake Haven, and the school district, and-
The hospital?
The hospital. Yep. And those five agencies. So the executives from those five agencies meet semiannually, and they're going to meet on the 24th.
Okay. I was just, the reason I was asking is the commissioners for the fire department are elected just like we are. So I was thinking you would have the fire chief instead of the commissioners.
Yes.
Maybe not.
The executives, correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Council President.
Thank you, Kevin, including the tabletop exercise for the school for an active shooter. Could you include some kind of training for the council in chambers, all of the people in chamber, if there's an active shooter or a volcanic eruption? So we would know, some kind of an earthquake? So we would know what to do in the event of an emergency?
Sure can.
For example, do we go, that door, that door, drop, me, throw a book-
Absolutely.
At an active shooter? Just some ideas?
Sure.
Yeah. Thanks.
Councilor Davy? Just a, a comment. I think it's great that we're going to have a, a practice with everybody. In my world of the technology I'm in, I would encourage that this group look at how they're going to connect all their two-way radios, cell phones, and all that with all the software. Because if we had something that happened like in North Carolina, and nobody can talk to each other or something that happened like at 9/11, all the practice doesn't do any good because you can't communicate. And that might be something, it's a capital thing, it might be an IT or whatever, but that's something the city should be coordinating. It's very inexpensive and being prepared for that time when all the cell towers go down.
Absolutely. And that's part of what we funded with the, the budget supplemental a couple of months ago in order to get the Kitsap County vehicles test bed. So that for a year or two, we have now parked over at the fire department's maintenance shop is our new-to-us motorhome. I showed the mayor last week. I give you guys a walkthrough if you'd like, but it's just an old motorhome that's been stripped, doesn't have anything in it yet. But it's going to be exactly that. It'll be providing redundant communications, and that's part of that grant that we've requested. And we just got approval from Washington State for our proposal. So about $20,000 to outfit this, so that we'll have redundant communications here in this building. So if you can make it here, or we can bring that ambulance with its communication, or the motorhome with its communication, and also conference capabilities, so that we'll have that redundancy, so that we can connect whether it's Starlink or another form of redundant communication. All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Kevin. Okay. Next, we're on to finance.
Finance is up next. This is some of the things that they did in the last biennium that you are all aware of. As our, as our governing board of city finances, we had a record investment income, or investment revenue of 3.8 million. We maintained our AA2 rating. We issued debt for the new maintenance facility. We're in the process of closing out the, the Qualic B entity, which was something that we formed for the finance portion of the PAC. So that will be closing out soon. We'll have a, we'll throw a party once that's closed out. And then with strategic planning and then some of its core functions to help just the city keep operating as far as payroll and our, our bills. One of the big things that we'll be talking about for the next couple of years is replacing of our financial system, or Eden as we call it. This is something that's going to effectively retire in 2027. It's, it's something that we could potentially continue, but because of payroll and, and some IRS regulations, it's something that we will have to replace. We don't have a choice in that matter. So the option of dragging along existing software in this case won't be an option, and it is expensive. And we'll be talking about that in the years to come. This month, we, or excuse me, this biennium, we do have a placeholder of just over a million for the preparation and the scoping out of what that looks like. So that is on the horizon. Things that we've, that finance has been doing, they, they have a, a staff of nine. Again, some of the things that they are doing, they're on the left. And you guessed it, they would love another full-time employee. So that's to help with purchasing. A lot of our purchasing is done by department, and having a central purchase agent of the city would be, would be huge. So that's something that they would love, but, you know, of all departments, they recognize that funding is not there for, for everyone. So, but just, again, know that they are, they are doing well, but they also would love more, more personnel. And questions for finance?
Councilor Honda?
Thank you. So when I go through the vouchers every month, I see different departments have, are buying things here, there, and everywhere. And I've asked in the past about having a central person, you know, do the purchasing instead of having every department or several people in every department go out and buy things. Is that what you're talking about?
Currently, well, the skill set that we would be looking for is not something that your average accountant goes into, it's completely separate. When you've got somebody who has got credentials in, is a certified public purchasing officer, a certified public purchasing buyer, they know where all the piggyback contracts are, they are connected, they're going to conferences, getting trained in that, they, they know the RCWs. The last couple of years, one of our assistant attorneys, Joanne, I spent, when we found slivers of time, we tried to work on the purchasing policy. Now, this is working on something in a, in an area that none of us are expert in. We've got people in public works or police or parks who know their area, they know where the piggyback contracts are, they know the bidding process, but it's terribly out of date, and it would be really good to have somebody who this is their, their career, their knowledge, their experience, and that, and that would serve us all well, and they would coordinate with every department.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Councilor McDaniel?
Yeah. I have a question on page 91, actually. And while we're looking that up, the first question would be, is the Eden project and budget, where is that located? Is that in IT or is that underneath the finance department?
IT is in, IT is its own department.
No, no, but the, the Eden replacement, 1.2, is that underneath of IT or is it under you guys' budget?
We will budget it as, in, in the IT department. And finance staff and IT have been working on the, on the RFP process jointly.
Gotcha. My question is, it has the highlights, and the highlights say 1.64 million in 2025 and 1.67 million in 2026, and that's a 26.7% increase. I am trying to figure out where the, maybe I'm just looking at this wrong. I see 20-
It's in the services and charges, and what is that going to be?
Is it pretty much just salaries, then?
The salaries are going up 15.8%. Oh, bank fees. Bank fees? Our bank fees are going up.
Point it out to me. Is it this big guy here? No, okay.
I'm trying to think why.
Okay. I guess my question is on the, the service fees, that's a huge jump of 150. What is that related to?
We may be centrally, do you happen to know, are we centralizing them to the finance department rather than charging them? Is that, is that what it is? Rather than absorbing them at the, at the Performing Arts Center, the Community Center, Dumas Bay, we're just absorbing them, we're just consolidating them. We, we want to see what the charges are in total, so we can see what they are.
So all bank charges, sure, charges will go into one filing?
Bringing them into finance. Yeah. Thank you, Chase.
Yeah. And then you guys would like a purchase officer, but it's not as part of the budget. Is that what I'm understanding?
We would-
The purchase officer was the term.
Right.
That's what you guys would like, but it's not as part of the budget currently, right?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. There's no other questions. Thank you.
All right. Councilor Davy?
Yeah. I'd like to go back to the discussion that we just heard about the purchasing agent or the place on your org chart that's empty. If there was a purchasing agent, would it take, would we actually save money or make money because the staff is not, and all the different staffs are not participating in the purchasing, or?
I'd like to think we could, but I wouldn't promise it. It's both an offensive and a defensive position. It would pursue savings, and it would also help keep us compliant, keep us out of trouble.
I'm not so worried about keeping out of trouble.
I am.
We're interested in, how is it revenue neutral, or how would we, are we taking work away from our other staff so we could afford this? I mean, I got to believe we're already staying out of trouble or somebody be here already.
We are.
So that's not a good justification for me, but if, for example, Public Works is spending, you know, a month a year doing the purchasing, and we can move it over to a full-time person, I mean, do we save money, or is it just a, we're adding another layer of bureaucracy?
No, I think it's, well, we have an engineering manager.
And sorry, EJ, I didn't mean your department. I'm just using it as an example.
No, his department, his department has got the most complex purchasing there is, and those, those, the bidding requirements are, are the most strenuous. Christine Mullen has spent a lot of time working on, we've looked at our, at our procedures. There's a lot of places where it says, finance does this and finance does that, but we don't have a position. So we've had to identify who in Public Works or who in finance, whether it's our receivables person, or it's Chase, or me. Need to do all the different steps that, that keep us compliant, really, is what it is. I think, I don't see us making more money. I don't see us-
Okay, maybe not. Would we be moving money from one department to the other so we're not increasing our budget? Is it more of a?
I, I, I don't think I would even say that, that your engineers are going to be freed up because they're always going to have to be part of the bid processes. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. I'll just be honest.
All right. Councilor Sethad Dawson?
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe I'm going backward or whatever, but if so, then let me know. I'm on page 23. And when we look at capital project funds, we have Performing Arts and Events Center in here.
Page 23?
23, under Capital Project Funds.
Yes.
Correct. However, on page 22, I don't see it under Capital Project Funds, the PAC. So, and there's no numbers associated with it there.
I don't, I don't have an answer off the top of my head.
Chase is coming to a microphone.
Yep.
So that's where we built the facility. We used to have a capital project fund when we built the Performing Arts and Events Center, so it is a fund that still is active, it's just not used. So when we built the Performing Arts and Events Center, we built it out of a capital project fund called the 308 Fund. We also have an operations Performing Arts and Events Center Fund, which is the 115 Fund, which is a special revenue fund. So it still is a fund. It just doesn't have a budget in, in it anymore because we already built the facility.
And that's a really good point, because there's going to be coming a time where we're going to need to start thinking about the capital replacement of the different components of the Performing Arts Center. Years off, but we currently aren't funding anything in it. Is that true?
That's correct.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's, it's, it's not used at the moment. We've completed the construction. We don't want to lose track of it.
Councilor Sethad Dawson, do you have another question?
I'm still processing it, so, no, thank you.
Okay. All right. Let's know if, if, if you have a follow-up. Councilor McDaniel?
I'm going to fall for hers. What was the multiple, it has zero percent, zero for the budget, but what was the multiple facility, municipal facilities? What was that fund for originally?
Municipal facilities. Go ahead, Chase.
That was the, it was the 302, the fund number is 302. It's a capital project fund that we used many years ago. I believe it had some, like, I think we built potentially the Federway Community Center out of that fund, back when we built that facility. And so we always have to have a capital project fund when we build facilities, and it needs to come out of a specific type of fund, and that's the type of fund that facilities get built out of.
Okay.
You might ask, why don't, why don't we eliminate funds that we don't use anymore? The reason is, we have to keep them there until council takes action to go, to make them go away. We, we can't create funds unless council creates them. So we tend to keep everything on the chart, even if it has no money in it.
Well, I think the confusing factor was, it was listed on one side but not on the other side, so it was like, it was kind of confusing. But thank you for the answers.
Yes, sir.
I think that was my, what I was processing also, because we do have zeros on this side, but not for PAC, so, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Steve? All right. Great job. Thank you very much. Okay. Now moving over to human resources.
All right. This is HR. This is the org chart for their four FTE departments. These are, these are some of their priorities. I'm not going to go through them, but I will talk about them as I go through the rest of the presentation. Key accomplishments for the current biennium, we did a non-represented employee market study, which was, which was huge. I, when I first started, we always talked about doing this for the non reps, and it just, we couldn't quite ever get it done. And so finally, we hired a consultant to come and do this. And we went all through the trouble of doing that, and then COVID hit, and then it took some while, it took a while to implement it, and it was just always really complicated to get the non reps at the market, you know, where they needed to be. And, and Vanessa has, has done that, I would say with ease, with in-house. So that's, that's been huge on, on her part. We appreciate her doing that to get the, the non rep employees at their current market rate. The HR also looked into some deferred comp and Roth options for, for our employees, which has been a, a added benefit to the organization. The wellness program was upgraded. We switched medical providers, which is a massive undertaking. That's, again, that was mostly done in-house, and so that's something that we can brag about and to, it's been a great benefit to our employees. Again, we, we implemented pet insurance for the first time, so that's been a benefit to our employees. And then we negotiated a contract for the Guild, which we, the council just talked about here recently. And then a few other ones that I would emphasize is that we did, and we implemented the independent salary recommendations for mayor and council, and then conducted investigation, resolved conflicts and/or complaints. This is also a very time-consuming undertaking of the, of HR, Vanessa and her staff, and so she's done a very good job of that. I'm, I'm privy to a lot of that, as is the mayor, and I've been able to, to see firsthand the, the, the level of detail and care that has to go into that, and Vanessa does an outstanding job with that. Some of the goals for next year is to continue with our, with our labor groups and getting them agreements that they can agree to. I, I like how this bullet point is worded, says create and deliver robust personnel training. There's, we could very easily, as an organization, do some token trainings for our employees and checkboxes, but Vanessa has been an advocate, and I, I agree with her, in providing a training that is meaningful and something that our employees can retain. It's not just to say, yeah, I've done this to do it. It's training that we can, that we can, that we can receive and that will be of, of benefit to, to our employees. You know, just as a, as a side note, this was not a required training, but one of the ones that came across her desk that was, that she forwarded to the directors was a, was a mental health first aid class. That's something that I'd never really conceived in my mind before, that you could have a certified first aid responder for a mental health crisis, and it goes through and help recognizing the situation and then helping them and referring them to the right resources. That was one, that was one of the most memorable ones that I have taken as a public employee, and I, I really appreciate her bringing that to our attention. Let's see here. Again, we talked about the non rep salary. Again, that's going to be, that's something that, that she tries to do every three years to keep our non reps where they need to be. They're, you know, that's not a contracted group, and so that's something that just, we just need to be mindful of. And then updating employment guidelines and personnel policies and procedures. One of those most recently was implementing a, a work-for-home policy, something that we implemented recently, and is something that has also provided some added efficiency and benefit to our workforce. And that, questions?
All right. Councilor Honda?
Thank you. Are all of our employees at the current market rate that the study showed that they should be at?
The last survey we conducted was in 2023, so as of then, they were placed at market. I would venture to say that our call in 2024 was probably slightly below market. And so we may be slowly falling behind, which is why those three-year surveys are important to kind of reset and make sure if any particular classifications have fallen behind, that we're bringing them up to market.
The pet insurance sounds really interesting. Can you describe that? It's just fascinating.
It's just a payroll deduction. Our broker has the contract with Nationwide Pet Insurance, and so we were able to kind of do it as an add-on benefit that were requested actually by one of our animal control officers. But employees via payroll deduction get decreased rates, cheaper than they would be able to get in the open market themselves to pay for pet insurance for their dogs and cats.
Oh, cool. And under exit, exit surveys or exit interviews completed, it's at 100%. Does every employee who leave participate in that?
Every employee is offered an opportunity to participate, not all choose to do so. But we do have exit communications with 100% of employees who exit, if at least to explain the termination of benefits and how that works.
So what percentage actually take part in having an interview?
I would say the majority, and quite frankly, even the ones who decline an actual in-person meeting end up on the phone with one of my staff members or myself talking through the exit process. But believe it or not, a lot of people don't have anything to say about employment. When it's negative, we hear about it. When it's positive, we don't typically have much to say, other than I enjoyed my time here.
All right, thank you.
Councilor McDaniel?
Yeah, a couple of questions on the performance measurements. What is wellness your way accounts? What are those?
Those are, are, we have medical plans, and, and I actually will take an opportunity to just expound upon the benefits numbers, because I want you to understand when you're looking at our salary to benefits ratio, if you look at the 25 and 26 projected numbers and do the math, those are 38% of wages. When you look at the actuals, I just wanted to illustrate quickly, the city's most expensive health plan, meaning I'm on our Kaiser HMO plan, and I am insuring my family, my spouse and my children, that plan costs the city $28,716 per year, per employee on that plan. Compared to the least expensive plan, which is I'm just insuring myself on the Kaiser HMO plan, that costs the city $7,185 a year. So our least expensive and our most expensive health insurance plan have a difference of $21,500 plus. So if you look at HR and the benefits increase is 35%, that's because three out of four of us insure ourselves. So the cost, the actual cost of our insurance is much cheaper than what's budgeted. However, if one of my staff members who was leaving was replaced by somebody with a full family on their benefits, I'm gonna have a budget shortfall of $22,000 a year. So we budget at that employee plus family level to prevent having budget shortfalls in staffing and replacement. So when you see that difference in number, like, the Economic Development Department number is very high, that's because Julie and Tanya are insuring themselves. When you look at the city clerks, that number is very low because workers and the clerks are insuring their families. So that's why that number is differentiating between departments. But if you do the math, you can get the actuals and the projected.
That actually helped, helped a lot in explaining that part.
The wellness your way account?
Yeah.
So you know, our medical plans, we have, if you, if you participate in wellness, you get kind of discounted medical premiums, meaning you're getting an annual biometrics test, blood tests that tell you if your cholesterol is high, low. It's basically flagging any markers that you may wanna follow up with your healthcare provider on to be a preventative measure. If you participate in that, your medical premiums, the portion the employee pays, is cheaper. If you don't, then you're in what we call a non-wellness plan, and you pay a little bit higher premiums and a reduction in coverage.
Gotcha. That actually probably answered the next one, was the biometric participant, it's a blood, pretty much a blood test, it sounds like, or some kind of test.
Yes, that's, we host those here, or you can go to your own doctor and have the labs performed, but it's a simple blood prick that tests kind of the basics. For some folks, especially police officers, that's the only preventative health screening they're having all year. So it's a way to flag people that they may have an issue with their cholesterol or their blood pressure, or, you know, they'll calculate BMI at those appointments. So it's just kind of a preventative health measure.
Gotcha. And then two last questions. You just mentioned that the differences in the plans. What are the employees' percentage, do they have to cut in, kick into a family plan like that?
We pay 100% of employee coverage. We pay 90% for spouses and dependents. If your spouse, however, has group health insurance through their own employer, we do not pay any of their premium if the employee enrolls them on our plan. So spouses without access to their own group health insurance will cover at 90%. The employee pays 90, or 10% of that premium. But if they have their own coverage, then the city does not pay for any of their premium.
Thank you. My last question is, looking at page 67 in the budget, supplies, service charges, intergovernmental have like 0% changes? Are we just trying to keep everything squeaking through?
You know, I'm one of those people who, I work with what I have, and I'm, I think I'm the only department that doesn't have a challenges or slide because I'm not here to talk about what I don't have. But I will tell you, for a city our size, we have four full-time employees in HR. I'm blessed with an amazing team that has incredible work ethic and have been here long enough that they can do this job in their sleep and, and get an incredible amount of work done. But a city of our size like Auburn has 10 full-time employees in HR. So we do the best we can, we enjoy the pace, but at some point, especially if my more senior staff leaves, I will be here asking for staff.
And my last question is, what is the, what is, what falls into the intergovernmental line item?
We pay a lot of fees via health insurance, via intergovernmental. I'm gonna draw a blank now that I'm here before you. We have kids' vax. Well, and I'm also working, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm drawing a blank.
Well, and I will say, I think a lot of those things, like the intergovernmental fees in particular, we have like a Washington State program that says if you're self-insured, you have to pay per employee into a kids' vax program to, to pay for vaccinations in schools for kids. So we have intergovernmental fees that historically have been paid out of my budget that really should have been paid out of the healthcare fund, which I have started paying those with. I think it's a minimal amount in the intergovernmental fees, but it is generally like related to health insurance or auditing fees or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Councilor Sethon Dawson?
Yeah, thank you. So same page, number of public safety testing applications processed? So is that like police department and then Public Works?
Yes, public safety applications are people who go through public safety training, just commissioned officers, applications processing coming over from PST.
So you actually had that many processed?
Yes.
Does that, do you have enough staff to do that kind of work? Or how does that work?
I have one staff who wears many hats, who spends incredible, I gave her her performance review today and commended her for the relationship she's built with the recruitment team down in PD. I think we've got probably the best recruitment team I've ever worked with, and our officers and, and Sun, our employee who handles civil service recruitment. She schedules all her vacations around the recruitment schedule. Lieutenant Vandevere and Officer Brian Shaw down in PD are incredible. They're just a team, they do what has to be done to staff the police department.
Thank you.
All right, Councilor Honda?
Thank you. So if someone goes ahead and gets the blood work done, gets a reduced rate for healthcare but doesn't follow through, do, do you guys monitor that?
It's an annual process. So annually, they have to complete both the biometric screening, and then we have, the Wellness Your Way is a program too, where people can far exceed and excel in wellness challenges and events, whether it's, you know, walking, running marathons, getting a dental checkup. They accumulate points for different wellness activities they complete during the year. But it is an annual thing. They have to do this every year, and if they haven't met the points in the biometric screening by the deadline, then they move on to our non-wellness plan the next benefit year. So it is ongoing.
Thank you.
All right, council, any other questions? All right, thank you, Vanessa, great job. Okay, now we're on to information technology, IT.
Okay, here's IT, organization chart for Thomas's department. He's got 10 full-time equivalents, or at least budgeted. Here are some of the functions which will play out in the presentation. So accomplishments for the current biennium is, I guess, one of the things I would emphasize is disaster recovery and security upgrades to our, to our, to our system. This is something that the council has been involved with, very heavily involved with. We've had, we've, we've had some analysis is done, analyses done, I guess, of our system, and several recommendations have come in to suggest what we need to do. And I, it's easy for me to say, yeah, we did it, but there's a lot of work that went into that, a lot of many nights and weekends to make that happen, because a lot of the work that they have to do is when the rest of the employees are not here, so as not to disrupt the, the operation of business. And so that is a massive undertaking that IT has accomplished. And it's ongoing. One of, in fact, one of the next slides, we'll talk about its challenges, and we, we need to stay on top of security and disaster recovery. We talked about MST's in economic development, the IT played a key role in that. Safe City Camera and replacing our existing infrastructure and expanding the number of cameras that we have is also ongoing. This has been, these play such an important role in our public safety and law enforcement role that we have as a, as an organization. That's been, having those cameras has been crucial in helping us solve many of the crimes that we are tasked with doing. We completed the broadband study, many of you were involved with that as well, and then we rebranded and changed our domain to federwaywa.gov, something that we've been trying to do for a while now. We've talked about my building permit and other departments, both in community development and economic development. Most of, most of that is done, we're, we're just finishing up migrating the rest of the permits to make that happen. That will be very welcome to our customers and staff. As we talked about before, some of the recommendations that we had in the past was to change the hours of our counter such that staff could have time to work uninterrupted. And that was the recommendation that we have with our Kaizen expert to, to reduce the hours to nine to four, and then also have a day that is entirely off to help staff effectively catch up and to walk to, in order to run faster, instead of running and being out of breath and going nowhere. And part of that is getting my building permit integrated, so that allows us to effectively have a counter that is 24 hours. It's not just the hours that are on our window, it's, it's virtual hours that we have for anytime anyone can submit plans anywhere. I've told you the story when we were working with the school district, when they were, when they were building the schools here a few years ago, they're right across the street here, and we didn't have an online permitting system yet, and so they had to effectively get a wheelbarrow and bring it across the street with all these big rolls of plans just to submit at the counter. And so with my building permit, anywhere, anyone, anywhere in the world can submit their permits to our counter. The, the phone system migration is also coming up, and that's gonna be, upgrade our system, and it'll provide many different features for our communication, both within the organization but, and also to our residents and customers. And then various upgrades, and then, we've talked before about the Eden financial appraisement. The IT is obviously essential to that, to making that happen. That's gonna, again, you're gonna hear a lot about that in the next few years. The challenges, I mentioned before, security is both an accomplishment and a challenge, so we've done many things to help with our security plan, but there's many things that we have left to do, and so that's not something that we are ever gonna rest on. That's something that, you know, the minute we get upgraded, there's some new person out there trying to come up with something else that thwarts city governments and their technology, so we're always having to stay on top of that. Staffing, you've, you've seen that before. And, you know, in the, in the past, the last couple of bienniums, we've been fortunate to be able to either add staff to the departments that have asked for it, or at least to look at ways to improve the, the staffing efficiency. But again, this year being a lean year, it's not something we've been able to do, and costs are only going higher. Businesses, not, the volume of business that we do as a city is not decreasing, and so our needs to staff that is, is not going away. And IT is central to that because their work is, touches all of us. The institute knowledge, institutional knowledge deficit, we do have a, an employee, Brian Pearson, who many of you know, he's a legend here at City Hall. He's gonna be retiring here in the spring, and so when he leaves, that will be a, an institutional knowledge, a deficit for us to replace him. And so that's not, not something that we're looking forward to, but it's something that we need to keep on the horizon. And again, keeping pace with technology evolution, as I mentioned before. This graph illustrates the staffing issues that we have at the city. Again, you've seen this before in previous presentations, but we're, we are by comparison low, but we, we work with what we have. And again, this is the ratio of IT FTE to the customers that it serves, the internal customers, I should say, which is city employees, and we have a very high ratio of employees, full-time equivalents that we have in comparison to our full-time equivalents in the IT department. Funded goals that we have, again, we're, we're constantly replacing equipment to make sure that we're staying ahead of, of what we need from a efficiency and security standpoint. Eden, I mentioned before, my building permit. Council chambers, we're looking at ways to upgrade many of the features in the council chambers. If you watch us on YouTube, it's, what, 4EDP? Or, yeah. So we're, you know, kind of in the, from an IT standpoint and the dark ages on that, it serves, it serves us well. I mean, it's not like you can't see you talking on the dais, but when it comes to displaying text and other graphics, it sometimes is a challenge for people to see on the, on the, on the, on the TV or on the, on the YouTube recording. They're gonna be heavily involved with the maintenance facility and making sure the IT infrastructure in there is up, installed, up to date and accurately. We're gonna be updating our Windows and Microsoft Office Suite. And then just updating some of the protocols and procedures that we have for use of our IT equipment by the users. You're a user, I'm a user of, of the IT infrastructure that we have, and so there's just some updates that we, that we need to do, that we need to look at, just to make sure that we are staying up to date. Next dollar priority is working with Sound Transit on the, the new station at the, the light rail station, and make sure that we have a camera there in place. Staffing, security, who we talked about. Again, security is an accomplishment, it's a challenge, and it's also a, you know, if they were to get additional funding, it would be a priority for, for IT to, to do that. And then one of the things I haven't mentioned is the, is the website. You know, we updated the website as part of our, as part of the Mayor State of the City address last year, and that is something that we, that we were accomplished, but it's, we're also still continuing to migrate a lot of the content onto the new website and making sure that it's, serves our, our users as it should. And improving our GIS services, our geographical information systems, to provide additional imagery for, again, both the employees and residents as we develop the city and, and infill and provide infrastructure that is beneficial to our residents. Questions?
All right, Councilor Honda?
Oh, thank you. We've talked for a number of years about updating the council chambers.
Yep.
And I know it's gonna happen someday.
Yes.
I just wondered.
My goal was this, this year, however, when I got the initial, so we contracted Avidex, who's on the state contract, to do, do the design. So they came in, they looked at all the features, they talked with us, Parks, city clerk, about the usable features, what we wanna do, new things, what we need to replace. They compiled all that, and they came back with $970,000.
They compiled all that, and they came back with $970,000, which is a lot of money. It's, we, now, to say that we don't, we, this is unique because we have a funding mechanism for this project. It's Comcast restricted funds, Fund 107, and so we can utilize that money. But at the end of the day, as those funds are collected based on PEG fees, and those PEG fees are based on subscribers of Comcast, and unfortunately, people are cutting the cord more and more and more, and thus our revenue in that account continues to go decrease. So where, where I'm going with this is, we can't, even though we can't afford a million-dollar project, we probably shouldn't. And so we've gone back to them, and we kind of prioritized, value engineered some items, and so I've just gotten the, the revised quote back, and I'm going to be going over that with the city administrator and kind of going through some priorities and then share it with the mayor, and we'll figure out how we want to move forward.
How much do you have in that account?
A little over a million dollars.
You know, what I, what I've heard from folks who are sitting out here, and when I sit out here, you can't read these monitors.
Correct.
And that, that would be the biggest thing I would want to see replaced if.
Yeah, what's, what's proposed is actually a 98-inch display here, potentially on that wall in the back, and potentially on the side as well, just so that that way you're giving maximum view. Everything will be 4K cameras, but we'll send out a full-on, high-definition 1080 signal through Comcast and directly to YouTube as well. So it'll be much clearer, much easier to see, a lot more options baked into the podium for, or, sorry, the dais. The microphone systems will be more of a conferencing system like the UN would use, where it actually has speakers for, for what they call mixed minus, so you would get, be getting the, the feedback from there versus overhead. It's a lot more effective, and it creates a little bit more, better, better ability to balance the audio, making sure that you're able to hear it and, without causing feedback issues. So there's a lot of things in there, and you're basically ripping and replacing everything because everything's all analog, and right now, and everything new is all IP, so it all runs over Ethernet cables, Cat 5, a lot of it, so they have to rip everything out, which is if you're ever in the back room and you see an amount of cable going up and below the floor, there's a lot. So it, it's, it's expensive, it's a lot of labor, it's a lot of labor, a lot of time, and equipment, everything, all the costs have gone up. So if we had done this even four years ago before a pandemic happened, they estimated probably around 600,000 versus 975, so it's just the nature of where we're at. But then again, technology has continued to evolve and get better, and so there's kind of a double-edged sword. But we have to do it, we're living on borrowed time, I've had to source items and stuff off of eBay in order to support this, so it's, it's, we're, we're moving forward on this.
And then the next thing I'd like to say is just to thank you and your team for what you do, because without you guys, you know, I, I know you come in on weekends, we've had major issues happening nationwide that have impacted our city, and your team is here making sure that the city still runs, so I'd like to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Councilor McDaniel.
Yeah, a couple of questions on just equipment. Do you know how many workstations you guys actually have to maintain?
So we're right around 400, no, sorry, 500 and, 500 and a half, 550, so.
How many servers?
Well, so physically.
Yeah, not, not the ones you guys have in the cloud that you guys are.
So we, we really don't have virtual machines in the cloud, so we have a cluster of six physical servers, we have six MVRs, three traffic, so a handful of physical servers, probably a little over 10, but we have altogether about 100 servers.
Okay.
Physical and virtual.
And then you actually cover all the work, all the hardware that's included with those servers, workstations, the police cars, everything, right?
Yep, everything.
Okay. Software-wise, how many big pieces of software is being operated? I know we've talked about the my billing permits, we've also talked about Eden, how many other big pieces of software are out there?
So almost every department has a core critical piece of software. So like, if you take, for example, you know, my building permit kind of, it's, it's not like the bread and butter of each department, that feeds into our Amanda system, which is the permitting system. Public Works has got a couple of it, View Works is, is an option, or is one of the softwares that they use, but they also heavily rely on GIS, they heavily rely on Blue Beam for plan review. Police, the Spillment Flex, Motor Oil Flex that I was here before committee on for the five-year agreement. So every, you know, Laserfish for the city's document management system, so pretty much every department has a core critical piece of software, and then there's overarching ones. Like Eden, for example, yes, it's a finance ERP system for enterprise resource planning, but at the same time, the whole city uses it, you know, to approve requisitions, to create requisitions and purchase items, versus what Steve was saying, it's not a centralized department, everybody, every department uses that. I can use it, I can run reports out of it for my finance, I can look at my expenditures, my revenue, so I can, I can do that, so any department can do that as well. So there's a lot of overlapping stuff, not to mention the core things like our Microsoft licensing for servers for Exchange, all the antivirus, NMLware servers that we use for CrowdStrike, for example. So a lot of, a lot of overlapping pieces of software. I don't have an actual number to give, give to you, but if you, if you would like an exact number or an itemized list, I'm happy to provide that for you.
I will get that list later, but not today. Then I'll go on staffing. So your current staffing needs, do you feel that there is a need for additional staffing? Or do you feel like you guys are current adequate, or what is the, the next two to five years, because technology can continue to advance in my mind?
So at the, you know, it's a little bit of a loaded question, right? We can always use more staff, to a point. Are we going to be a Bellevue and need 66 FTE in our IT department? Absolutely not. We're not Bellevue. We're not, we don't have that many full-time employees to support, we don't have that many computers to support, we don't have that many different business, business items or businesses to, to support. Divisions, same thing with Kent, Kent has a full water, water sewer, we don't have that. So we don't need the, the people that, same thing with Auburn, you know, we don't have a golf course, we don't have an airport. So that's why I use this, that's why this is key, in my opinion. This, this analysis here is key because it kind of takes, a larger the city is, it's, and the more services they have, the more IT FTE they're going to need to support those, right? And so when I divide that, and I find that ratio, that's where this is key. So if we put us down to kind of in the, in the middle sweet spot, 25, 28, with 15 IT FTE, our ratio would be 26.5. You know, so that puts us right there. Can I use backup? Yeah, there, there is no next man up strategy here in, in my department. I have one guy that deals with the Safe City equipment, I have one guy who's going to be retiring to deal with the telephone telecommunications, the spillman system. I've got one person in GIS, we're hiring a second, but that's a backfill. I've got one applications, one system, one mobile technologies to help deal with the police car and the body cams and, and all that, and I've got one person on help desk. So help desk calls in sick, you know, there's no backup, right? There's no next man up. And so that's where, we're at 10 FTE right now. If we were at 15, for example, I would be starting to hire a secondary help desk, another systems and network engineer, that kind of stuff, so that that way we can, another applications person to kind of split the load. So long answer to the question is, yes, we can, always use staff, but to a point.
Gotcha. And when was the last time you guys added to your staff?
That was in the 20, yeah, it's two or three years ago. 22 budget, 21, 22, I think.
It shows, it shows 10 since 22, so I'm guessing right before that then?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I have a couple of questions on page 96, what's going through and talking about department spends and stuff. You have special contract 400,000, is that the Comcast you were talking about?
92.
Yes, oh, 96, sorry.
96?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so 96 has a special contract, yep, that, that's it.
Okay.
That's it.
And then just out of curiosity, can you explain to me what like the tech fees are? Is information technol, like what, what falls in underneath that? Don't have to be detailed as much, you just give me like grand.
So tech fee, there's two things that fall underneath that. There, the city has by ordinance, or in the fee schedule, a $1 per transaction, so over $8. So if you have a, a transaction with the city, you would pay an additional $1 as a technology fee to help support those systems.
Okay.
In addition to that fund is the automation fee, so when you buy a permit from the, from community development, single family, multifamily, whatever, you pay, I forget the fee, but maybe Keith can help me, it's 20, I, it used to be, is it 5, oh yeah, 5%, but, or a flat fee, I forget what the flat fee is, if it's $50 or something like that, but it's a flat fee and then it's a 5%.
Okay.
Whichever's greater.
What about the information technology, the, the larger one, the fourth?
So our 502 fund is the interfund, and so that is effectively interfunded from all the other departments together.
Okay, and mail duplication, I'm assuming?
Same, it's the same fund.
Okay.
It's just used for a different purpose. So information technology is our core fund made up of municipal courts, data processing, communications, GIS, police, GAC, and web.
Mail and duplication.
And Wi-Fi.
Okay.
And the mail duplication is a complete fund, but that's 503. And 503 is pretty much paper, copiers and printer maintenance, there's postage in there, some other things, some things that aren't under our control, but predominantly what we use the fund 503 and the majority of it is the copier and printer maintenance.
Gotcha. And then the last couple I have is on the bottom section, so service charges, what falls under the service charges?
400 series is a lot of our, all of our maintenance fees, so.
Okay.
Our software licensing with Microsoft, for example, comes out of there, Amanda comes out of there, all our support for all of our major systems comes out of there. There's also cellular phone, I believe it's 420, and telecommunications. Yeah, all those, all those things are basically the bread and butter of what we do, other than personnel and supplies, and intergov is a little different as well, that's mainly radio support, so from King County, we have to pay for the PCERN, PCERN membership service fee for all the 800 megahertz radios for the police department, and then also our internet services, inter, inter, intergovernmental funded as well.
Gotcha. And last one is the capital outlays, that can be the Eden, or is that something different?
So that ebbs and flows per year, depending on what we, what we request out of the, for capital, and so that's why there's so much, there, there's much larger swings in that one. It just depends on what we get approved or what we need to do, what we need to replace, servers, computers, software, for example, and so that's what's, why that's so different as far as delta goes.
Gotcha. And just out of curiosity, where is the Eden baked into this, these numbers?
So that is a good question, that would be in, it should be a capital, I'm, but I'm not sure where that was funded, it might not be in here.
It's in 502 and, it's in Fund 502 in 2026.
But what, what object series?
600.
Is it 600?
Yeah.
Okay, you put it in 600, okay.
I don't know what that 600 means, but thanks for the other answers.
I know, we're talking in code, I apologize.
Yeah, 600 series is all the capital, so any, any, the last three digits of an account, code six.
Now, now I see the 600, thank you.
All right, Councilor Sevedos.
Since IT is really the heartbeat of the city, I, and, but you already, he asked about staffing, but you already have two vacancies and then, of course, one person retiring, so it's a little, you know, for me it's uncomfortable, but you answered the question, so I think I'm going to let you, you know, worry about it and us not even, you know, do anything.
Okay.
That said though, because I would love to make sure that you guys are fully staffed for various reasons, especially considering that there's a lot of hacks happening and, you know, so, but good luck.
Thank you.
You are planning on filling those vacancies, correct?
Yes, yes, they're open right now.
Oh, I know, I, I, yeah, I understand, but they're still vacant, so.
Yeah.
Just making sure that.
It was, it was at the time that the budget kind of went through, we're actually, we've got interviews for the GIS position tomorrow.
Oh, great.
So hopefully we'll can hire that one. The analyst is a little bit harder of a role to fill, it's kind of wears multiple hats, it's not necessarily unique to our city, but it is definitely, we get kind of two different ends of the spectrum, and we need, we need the Goldilocks, we need the just right one, so.
No, great. My question, one is, on page 94 talks about federwaywa.gov users versus page views.
Yep.
So what's, can you explain to me?
So that came straight from Google Analytics. Councilmember McDaniel, honestly, would probably answer that better than I can, but for the most part, from the way that I see it, the users are the actual active users, but a user, one person, I can bring up federwaywa.gov, but I can view several different pages in that session, and so it kind of shows you not only the users, that you're, the unique audience that you're getting to your, to your website, but also how engaged they are and how many pages they look at while they're there. And so that's, that would be my, my answer to that question.
So they're part, there's subgroup of the page viewers probably.
You wanted to help you on that one?
So I, I think the users kind of feed into the pa, yeah, into the page views.
Yeah.
So one user is typically for multiple page views.
Okay. All right.
Is that it?
I have another question. Excuse me. For number of map requests?
Yeah.
Who, is it staff, or is there external requests for maps?
So a little bit of both, and you kind of caught me on, on this one, it's a little bit of a fun number that I put in there for that. So we have about 150 standard data, data layers that we, we apply for with, 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 for GIS, not that we apply for, that we, that we have on GIS system, on our GIS system. The map requests, it's, it's a hybrid because we do get some requests from the public, and it is in the fee schedule that we could charge for them. Those are not a whole lot, but internally, we get, we get a lot. And so even so, like 100 map requests doesn't seem like a lot, and we're tracking, so we were migrating to a new system to help try, start tracking these statistics a little bit better, so this was kind of a, kind of best effort guess at those, instead of a concrete, this is the exact number. But yeah, it's from internal and external users.
Okay. And then lastly, hours of TV broadcasting per day is 24 hours?
Yeah.
I don't have cables, so I don't even know the content.
Yeah, so the content on, that we broadcast is bulletin board system, and then in, intermixed with the bulletin board is city council meetings, state of the city, some of the holiday tree lighting, Fourth of July, we air some content for the school district over the summer, so wide variety. And so part of, again, the, the council chambers redo is basically all that equipment in the back room is going to go away, except for the wireless microphone system, that's pretty much the only thing we're keeping. What that will allow us to do is actually stream not only this meeting like uniquely, so you could, you could say, hey, this is the council meeting, it's live, but we can also stream 24 hours a day via YouTube so that we can reach a broader audience versus just the people on Comcast cable.
So I'll be one of those, right?
So you, you will be able to, to watch that on YouTube, that's the goal with the system that, that we're proposing, yeah.
So this question may be for the mayor also, so if we have ideas or suggestions for content, can we?
Of course.
Bring it to you?
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
And we, just to kind of follow up on that, that's exactly what we do as well, so when we get questions from other agencies, for example, South King Fire has wanted to air content as well as the school district, we always run that through the mayor's office because, you know, the mayor is the face of the city, like from the executive branch, and so we need to make sure that he approves it, so.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so what we're going to do, the plan I think is to address the executive session following the meeting, since we don't have that length of, thank you very much, Thomas, great job.
You're welcome.
And what we'll do is, we've got two more presentations, one on law, one on, from the mayor's office, let's power through to 6:15, have 15 minutes between this session and the city council meeting, and like I said, we'll do executive session following the city council meeting. Sound okay? Okay, let's go. Brian.
Okay, thank you. This is the organization of the law department with Ryan Call, is our city attorney. And again, these functions will play, actually, this is the, so there's civil and criminal. Civil is, is the ones that you mostly deal with, where they provide us timely and accurate legal advice to the mayor, council, court, boards and commissions, the city departments. They prosecute, defend or prosecute litigation involving the city, and I'm not going to read all of these, but they, this is the face of the law department that you will see more face of the law department that you will see more of, rather than the criminal side, uh, and that is where they litigate all adult, non-filony criminal matters, um, and the appeals of those, traffic infractions, uh, police training and community court, um, so that, that's the face that you see less of, but is no less busy than the, uh, civil side. Challenges, uh, the insurance rates, uh, continue to go up, this is one of the, uh, bigger increases, um, that you, you will see in the budget from, from last year, and again, this is just because risk and inflation has, has combined to, uh, increase the, uh, insurance costs to, uh, the city. Uh, there will also be an increase in legally mandated public defense attorneys, um, that will result in increased prosecutor workload, um, this is a, a matter that is, is gonna increase anyway, but more particularly with the Supreme Court considering, uh, limits to the number of cases, public defenders, uh, misdemeanor cases that public defenders can take, that's going to increase the, tremendously, the need for attorneys, uh, for public defenders, and that's gonna create some challenges, both in terms of costs to the public defense side of the city, but also as we fund public defense, we also are responsible to prosecute the cases, and so, funding the prosecutor side of that, uh, will be challenging as well. So, that is, and we'll see more of the public defense stuff in the mayor's budget, 'cause that's in the mayor's office, but, um, on the prosecution side, that's in the law department, so, any questions for the law department?
Okay, Councilor McDaniel?
Yeah, uh, first one is risk management, now, is that the self-insurance side, or?
It's, it's a little of both, so we, um, in the risk department in civil, we have to forward everything to WCIA, who's our outside insurer, so, there's a significant amount of liaison work that goes into that, but on top of that, anything that's not covered by the pool, um, we're still essentially self-insured for. So light poles, um, any damages to vehicles under our, um, thousand dollar deductible, things like that.
Um, next one is service charges, uh, can you give me, now, is our, what, what is actually in the service charge, I guess, best way to put it?
That's insurance premiums.
Is that the?
Sounds like insurance premiums, is what Mr. Groom is saying. We also do hire attorneys, um, to represent the city for civil litigation and also defending the police in non-judicial proceedings.
All right, and then the, I guess the last one I'll ask right now is, um, we just had that recent lawsuit, uh, on the construction of the road and stuff like that, where would the funds for that, uh, litigation be located? I know it's not really in this, but what would I, what would it have been?
It was not in my budget, so, that was actually funded out of the operation, the, the budget that we used to build the road, so EJ could probably answer better than I could.
Yeah, that came out of my capital budget, it's about a three or six fund.
Is that how, if we have litigation, does it used to go against, it just happened to be that time?
That case was unique because it was a construction claim case, so it was a contract dispute, insurance companies weren't involved, we were entirely self-insured on that point, so it was wrapped into basically the building costs of, of, of building the road.
Would it normally be shown up under the service and charges then?
If it was a non-contract dispute, like, it wasn't tied to an actual project, yes, it would be in, in one of my services.
All right, Councilor Honda?
Thank you, on the public defenders, since it's gonna be required that we follow the new, it's rules, is anyone gonna help cities pay for that?
Not to my knowledge, not, I, I, I haven't seen any, um, action from the state legislature on this topic yet, I know A W C is engaged to, to, to talk about it, but I haven't seen anything yet.
It could have quite an impact on cities' budgets.
Well, and, and it would have, you know, if they did it, if the state Supreme Court instituted the rule, um, yeah, it, it would have a dramatic impact on our ability to.
Two to three times, is my estimate.
Yeah, and that's not legislative, that would be a Supreme Court rulemaking function, so we are, uh, engaging on that, on, on a regional level.
And then how it's funded is something, maybe the state could help us, historically, the state has not been terribly sympathetic with cities.
True.
And their cost of running municipal courts.
But this will affect every single, well, as most things do affect every single city, but.
Yeah.
Every jurisdiction, not just cities.
Yeah, it'd be dramatic.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Seveda Austin?
Yeah, mine is simple, um, performance measures, so you only work with actual numbers then and no, um, proposed numbers?
You know, we don't really have aspirational goals on how many contracts we're gonna review.
I know.
We review all the contracts that we have to review.
So twenty twenty-four is gonna change at the end of the year, right?
I haven't really seen a pattern, it's, it's interesting, it, it fluctuates wildly, so, we respond, we're very reactive in that way. So, some of my goals, I mean, we want to, um, we talked about the purchasing manual, I've been trying to get that thing updated for a while now, um, staff turnover has made it difficult, but, those are the kind of things we set goals for, but yeah, hard metrics, um, mostly I just report out, so you know what we're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you very much. It's great to see no drama out of the law department, that's usually a good sign. Thank you very much. Exactly, that's right, knock on wood. All right, Brian, um, uh, the next one is mayor's office.
Okay, uh, goals and objectives of the mayor's office, this is pretty self-explanatory, but, um, we are, we, we, everything that you've heard so far is rolled up into the mayor's office, so this is an appropriate ending to the budget presentation. Um, we facilitate your decision-making and policies, um, so that we're, whatever policy that you want on behalf of the city, that we, uh, executed efficiently and effectively, and, uh, court, we also are responsible for coordinating effective communication, uh, to our, um, our constituents, media and, and employees. The budget is, uh, is a slight increase from last biennium, um, and, uh, as has been mentioned before, we created the human resources department and the clerk's office department as well, uh, since the last biennium, and so they are now their own departments, that was one of the highlights that, uh, from an organizational standpoint occurred in the last biennium, and I think that's it, happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Councilor McDaniel?
Yeah, I actually have more of a general question, something that I've been wondering about, when, I feel like I've been drinking from a fire hose.
Yeah.
With the, the budget, with the stuff, and the amount of documentation and stuff.
I hear ya.
You know, I had to watch some YouTube videos just to figure out what's going on, so what actually, when is the budget required to be voted on, like, how much time do we have to digest this, go back and forth, and then when do we actually start having budget, uh, like, actually voting and stuff like that?
Has to be done by the end of the year.
Okay.
And then, uh, we've got this scheduled for first reading on what date?
October fifteenth.
Second reading?
Uh, no, I'm sorry.
November. We have another, we have another deliberation, we have another deliberation scheduled for, I believe Thursday, is that right?
Next week.
Next week, I'm sorry.
The first, the, inside the cover of your budget book is the timeline.
All right.
Uh, fifteenth.
It's the fifteenth.
Fifteenth, there's a hearing, but the ordinance first hearing is November sixth.
Yes, okay, so we have another meeting after this to, where there's no presentations, and it's just for you to deliberate and discuss feedback, and then if you're ready to go for first reading, at the November reading, we do that, but to the mayor's point, we have to get it done by the end of the year.
Okay, that was my main question.
By law, it's required, yeah.
Thank you.
And, we normally do not have a second meeting in, we, we never have a second meeting in December.
Yes.
So really, it's the, it's the first Tuesday of, of December. Uh, Councilor Honda?
So, uh, if council members want to make any changes in this, should we now write an email to somebody on staff?
Yeah, yes.
Sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
Oh, Brian, you go ahead.
I'm just gonna say, that would be most helpful, is, is if you, uh, uh, have, you know, after you've heard everything, now that you have, if you want to, um, recommend anything, it would also be helpful if you have a, a source for where you're getting the request, that would help too, although, that's not required, we will take your request, we'll do our best to make it happen, but yes, um, if you could, um, give us your, uh, and it would help that you, if it's your, like, your beginning and end thoughts to us, so that we can, like, do a deep dive in what you're asking for, and then run it by the mayor, and then come back to you and present how we're gonna make it happen, or how we're not gonna, you know, there's, it's not doable, so.
And I've got a suggestion, uh, Brian, so, what I would suggest to council members, obviously, you know, you could talk amongst yourself, but don't get to four, obviously, 'cause you guys are very good at that, and we can't get to four, um, for current purposes, but, if, if, uh, what, what we'd ask you to do is exactly that, send an email, and what I would suggest is include me and Brian, I'd have Steve Groom on the email, and would you please also include the, the council president, and if you want to do it, don't include more than, um, one other council member in that, in that email, just to make sure. Now, what we'll do is, once we start kind of getting our arms around the, the request, we will let council member know what is being, what is being requested, but we just need to be very careful in any sort of back and forth, to make sure that we don't have any kind of, um, uh, de facto, uh, open public meeting violation, you know, um, that, that this is occurring in the light, not occurring in the light of day. So, yeah, just me, Brian, uh, Linda, Steve Groom, what's that?
How about Amy?
Uh, sure.
So she can disseminate to the rest of us.
Well, no, I, but, we'll, we'll make sure, we'll, we'll make sure the council, what, we will be, and, we will make sure the council gets all the information in a manner that it really protects the O P M A and the institution. You guys, right. So, and I, what I would also say is, that will give us, and if you wanted to just come by, I mean, my, my, I'm here all the time, and Brian's here, and Steve's here, um, if you wanna come by, we could talk about it, we can meet in groups of up to three, and then we could start getting our arms around this, and then, um, and then we'll do our best, uh, if, if there's wide-scale, uh, changes, obviously, just please be cognizant of, you know, it is a zero sum, we, you know, we're, we're right at the, the funding levels of what's required for our, um, reserve funding, and so, we just need, if there's a request to, like, you know, we've been talking about physicians and about departments, so, wouldn't it be nice to get certain departments up to, uh, certain levels, but if we do that, then we just really need to figure out where that money is coming from somewhere else. Councilmember?
I have a note, I was gonna send in an email, but I'll just ask now, if we could get something from every department as to what they want, um, in more staffing, I know it's been, uh, traditional that, like, the clerk's office asks for more staffing, we didn't see that, um, perhaps they need more staffing, they just didn't ask because they were, you know, instructed not to, 'cause of the, the lean budget, but if we could see what every department really would need or would like to see in additional staffing, it would be nice.
Okay.
Even if it's not possible, it would just be nice so that we know what the departments are asking for.
I think, you know, I, I'm gonna have Brian shepherd that, um, and, uh, he and I will work on this together, we've, we've seen it, we have a, we know exactly what each department is, you know, what the wish list is, and we'll, we'll compile that, but, um...
Yeah, 'cause we haven't seen that.
Yeah.
The, the wish list was sent out.
Yeah.
Steve Groom sent us, so, I think I forgot it, I got a picture of a one-page or two-page wish list.
I was just gonna say that.
Yeah, there's, to that point, there's.
Did that include staffing?
The list of needs goes beyond personnel, so.
I see, so this is personnel-based, um, all right, well, I, you know, Brian and Steve, let's, let's communicate about this.
If the question is personnel, we can certainly reduce it to just personnel.
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question, um, we, as we've gone through this budget discussion, there's been a lot of things that, we've talked about ads already, like, you know, maybe, you know, grant writer and all these different things, it'd be nice to get that list of what that looks like, um, and for the deliberations, I'm gonna be gone for the three weeks, I'm not gonna be here on the fifteenth, and, um, you know, I have some things that we haven't talked about that, you know, might be something we wanna add or deliberate, and then so you're suggesting I put that in the email and send it?
Would you please?
Okay.
And we'll make sure it's shared.
Yeah.
We'll make sure that we, that we do our best.
Okay.
To do, to work.
And I, I guess I would say one thing, well, one thing I think that we should, as a council, think about, is over the years, you know, we have these tight budgets, and something comes up and we want to do it, but we can't, 'cause we haven't thought about it, I think we should talk about having a reserve fund of a couple hundred thousand, that we just know that if we don't use it, it goes back into the budget, but it gives us the flexibility to do things if something came up, I mean, I don't know how, you know, 'cause we've gone to things and it's always gone to the mayor's office and you find the money, but, there might be some earmark that we wanna have in there, maybe that's the wrong word, something that gives us some flexibility.
Let me, let me, uh, let me go back to Steve real quick, don't we have, like, strategic reserve funds for that purpose, that we have reserve funds, like?
We have a strategic reserve fund for three million dollars, and it's at its minimum, because I think what you're talking about is having a little bit available for contingencies, not an emergency, but contingencies.
Yeah, not an, it's not an emergency, but it's, uh...
Yeah.
Right.
And the way, and where that comes from is when revenue comes in, above or when we have savings, and that's why we try to capture every request.
But we've got the nine million that we keep in the overall.
That's the general funds.
That's the general fund reserve.
That's the minimum.
We keep that at nine million in reserve, in cash flow back.
Okay.
But the two point five, or the two hundred, the?
Three, three million.
Three million. So, but, I, I hear what you're saying, and it, and, and actually what we would do, if, what I would suggest is, is, you, on, on a situation like that, maybe with the strategic reserve, maybe we go above the minimum, that, for something like that, that we give ourselves a little breathing room, maybe a hundred and fifty or two hundred, that's a, that's a one way to accomplish that.
Something that's, maybe that's council-driven, you know, Lydia or Paul or somebody might, you know, find something that's really important, but we never thought about it, 'cause it's a year out, and we need to find some sort of budget, and, we don't use it, it goes back into the wish list or whatever, but.
Right.
Some flexibility.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Councilmember Seveda Austin?
Yeah, um, actually to add to what he just said, I've been thinking about something huge and significant, something like the Aquatic Center, which King County runs now, what if they decide they don't wanna do that anymore? Are we even ready to take over? I'm, I'm just saying, I've been thinking about that, for example, so, do we have that kind of, um, funding or money to take over the operation, or, for example, like I said, the Aquatic Center? If King County decides not to run it any, anymore, I'm just.
Wow, yeah.
I'm just thinking.
Yeah.
It could be ten years from now, five years from now, tomorrow, who knows, you know, depending on their budget, then what happens?
Yeah.
But, but it's something to consider and have.
It is, yeah.
You know, so.
Yeah.
What, whatever money we have will be depleted, 'cause we, I don't think we wanna lose that, the city, right?
Right, clearly, no, it's a world draw, absolutely. Uh, Councilor, thank you very much, Councilor McDaniel?
I just wanna verify with the, the finance department, on page eleven, when it shows the proposed revenue of two hundred and three million, that's what we're looking at in a hundred and eighty million for two thousand and twenty-six, I just wanna make sure I'm looking in the right places for the right numbers.
I'm on page eleven, and I'm sorry, the proposed revenue?
Yeah, the total revenue, so, the proposed revenue, two oh three and, and one, a hundred and eighty million, is that the two that we are looking at to play with?
That's the total for the whole entire city, all funds combined.
Okay, just wanted to double check, thank you.
One of the things we have not discussed in this budget process so far is revenue